I'll see you later.
Tom and Dan, go forward.
It's it just has a mind. It's all and it doesn't. It was just talking a minute ago. It's all been female. It was working, but they just had that included every dream. Or the character listen for a second, but it was the one.
I got a text. The hospital hired today. I was like, oh, is it?
All of order when we create the council special council meeting. Oh, actually, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. We'll call please.
Counselor Rickell.
Here.
Counselor Diana Larson here. Counselor Catherine Rat there. Counselor Robert Cheney.
Here.
Mayor Luke Go.
Here. Our congratulations. Congratulations to the by building high stakes over there. And to the department, which is fans. Calling names and how to get on. Change of itself. All right, one thing we talked about today, back in January. City and world free. Not sure if it was that chance or we did. I was thinking, I know this was originally. But to talk about the city administrator and. That rules. Where they should be in that kind of thing. But I did understand where it was, was that the whole thing through this meeting that how anybody do a job?
I didn't look at the whole thing. I looked at things that I thought were. Certainly, but what we needed to go over that we didn't.
Well, I read it. I read the whole thing. So I read it wasn't. I mean, I under it, but um.
Yeah.
I had a couple of like small things I'm gonna do that I'm not there to maybe. Could I? There's my impression that we would want to. Uh, we would want to look at this because if we're gonna put something on the ballot, we might best. Make sure that we go into a few things that we can maybe add in that we need to direct.
That does everything that needs to be fixed at one shot.
When when we do that, you know, we ask change, say two different things. It is two different amendments that aren't mixed together.
So that is one thing I will talk to the elections office and our attorney with because you only have. A caption and a question that are very brief that are what you're asking people to vote on. And then you have a brief synopsis of what it is. I think if you want. People to have the option to pick, do I want to change this or do I want to change this? It would probably be better to have them separate. So if there's one thing that they agree with and not the other.
Yeah, it's not an all inclusive. It can be all or not. That was my question. That was.
Yeah, and I think that that would be the way to do it. Um, and I have to ask them as far as I don't know how many we're allowed to have on ballot. And those will be clues if there's multiple changes that you would like to see them. I'll just ask that all at once.
So this is an example of what gets submitted to for the ballot.
Yes, so this is what I would submit and then I would attach to it also. It's called an explanatory statement and it's more in depth on the background of what you're doing. And that explanatory statement will be in the booklet. But this is all that you get on the ballot that people will get.
So it's kind of like, yeah, we can give an explanation as to why our council wants to make this change. Might they benefit of it?
Uh huh, and we need to find out how many changes we can have on the ballot. For the same price. Or does each one cost?
Yeah, and I think in May was my understanding that the elections clerk was going to check that May would not be considered a special election. And we wouldn't have to pay.
Okay.
Where March, they normally it's an election cycle, but they don't usually have anything to go out. And so it wouldn't be considered a special election, which is why we were looking at that date. And so I have to confirm that with her as well.
Yeah, I mean, if that's case in March is the same as February as of May, but not really more. It's possible.
And I attached the calendar. So that we can speak twenty twenty six. Um. The last day for cities for a measure is January eighth for March ten. And then it's March nineteenth for the May election that we have to have everything determined. Um, but I'm talking with her. It sounded like she was like, they don't have one. And so. If there's no difference between us having to pay in March and paying May, I agree, we might as well pay in December.
All right, just that, yeah, so we can. Just let us know if I'm in. Thank you. In the meantime, what? Is required, we I know you wanted to go out. You will send, we want to try to go out with the way it is now or with what?
The description from job description to put the feelers out now with what we have now or.
With admission, see what happens.
Like until we have.
Now with this special meeting. We do have to keep it to the discussion of the charter. Um, as far as charter changes versus um. Other topics.
Yeah, yeah, they want to. I'm gonna probably ask you why it just stood there because it was in the meetings we did. It's kind of that we were gonna discuss.
Oh.
Only wanted to go.
Oh, I only I'm sorry. I only understood it as a charter amendment. Okay.
Question.
Yeah. Also, with the with the six, is that six months period of any contact? Would it conflict with anything that? Do you want to not win? Um. This week is.
Looks at the charter.
Means the. Allow to continue for six months. Is that right?
Yeah, it's a mission appointment is for it can go up to six months.
Yeah.
At that point, you can't certainly bond that we either have to hire somebody on a permanent basis. Or it's deferred as the mayor. But it says consecutive. That's anybody who really wanna. Let me look at that and see how it's wrote it. It makes a difference. Yeah. You know, yeah, it doesn't. It doesn't say we could be out for a day and then turn around. But you said that. But also if we were to hire somebody permanent at the end of that six months, I think six months goes through the verge of February, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and we decided to, uh. You know, we get that out there and we have some applications to look at at that point. Then the six months would end. And we could hire somebody at that point and that would still fall within the parameter of the six months because the vote could go. Within the six month period. I just get clarification on the point before. I know you you're generally that way. Says it, we're a big charter. But our minutes.
If the, yeah.
Minutes state that we were going to be talking about the city administrator. Yes.
That.
So I think we should be okay. Just because this might be vague, doesn't mean that we we discussed that this is what we're gonna be talking about this meeting. Because I could go back to that. Yeah, you guys are there with that.
I prefer that than having them meetings.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely. The only thing would be with the the news, man, I don't see anybody here that's gonna say anything other than me and I'm. And I'm not gonna say anything. So I mean, that's probably, um, that could be a full discussion talking about the job description piece.
Right, we just decide if we want to.
I mean, are there as many as anybody with anybody any concerns on that?
No, I think the job description we discussed last time was good, which is restricting where it says he doesn't have anything to do with. She, he has anything to do with the police. You, if we found out. They do, but I think that's got stricken. So um, I I think the job description these days and that to get us started.
Right.
Definitely in that recruitment, I like to say that we have to mention that they will be. There's discussion. I can dig along past the street background before being hired, which is common sense. When did you guys, when you guys went to those meetings? Over since the first week. The night before you maybe. Because we're not gonna get something.
Before then.
Before that, so you guys can discuss it with the people out there and maybe get some dealers or out there and see if anybody does there.
And will the. Based on the timing of. You know, this, uh, the charter, the ballot, that's what we're saying that we wanna. Have a hired date of like first of the year type thing like we have that. So that because I feel like having that communicated will be important for them to know.
Yeah.
Uh, so what is, what do you guys think that looks like? Um, because obviously if this goes into the ballot, wherever they get into the ballot for March, because they're thinking about that. The residency clause, right? That's what you're.
That.
Yeah, because like that part, we want to put in the ballot so that. Right, so we can communicate to them to on the job description, right, that we are putting out to ballot. But may change this may this will change. So that we're.
Right now residency required, but subject to vote may change.
Yeah. I was trying to think of like, when do we want that starting? Because like if they are going to get hired, they're gonna. Obviously, are we gonna allow them to be able to base until that passes?
Well, no, we're saying.
So I need to, yeah, because we might have people who might not to accept it now. He's got the thing that they like.
No, no, even if we even if we go out and we get the feelers out there in. For the narrative in the city, but it's a possibility that you may not have to. I mean, we may not get the applicants we want anyways. There's nothing to say that we have to hire somebody. On that because we appoint them, right? So I mean, if we only get one or two people, we don't think they're. Qualified applicants, we don't have to accept it. We can go out again.
Right, yeah, you don't have to accept any of the applicants. And I think the sooner the better to get it out there.
Yeah, yeah, to get started.
To get started, I can see that. And what what were we thinking? What would we? As a council, what we want for uh. The hiring board to be. Who do we want in?
We don't know. The council, right? We need a special, a special set. To discuss.
So you're either saying you want us to do the interviews and then make decisions or do we want a hiring board? I would people, I would include outside people. Yeah. I mean, with with council, but I maybe other people in the community.
I would like to see somehow a local resident in there. I'd like to see maybe. Former city administrator or maybe reach out to one of the cities to get the current city administrator. So you know, it's not just that. It's people that have done the job. Or do the job now, but any part of the process too.
If we did that, it might lead into more than just one session and one. Yeah, how many sessions?
Well, I think the idea would be maybe uh. Maybe consider a cutoff. Well, maybe we don't, but obviously we have a lot of pump where hey, we need somebody in there by this time. There's gotta be a cutoff. So we'll cut off, we're receiving applications until this date.
Right.
Yeah.
As they come in, we can pass those on to the people on the. Or they can repeat viewing them. Then once they have that cutoff, we'll have a meeting and we'll discuss them. And then maybe decide on, hey, we want to bring in at least two or three people or whatever and have them, you know, we'll have to maybe.
So like, so anymore to put.
I don't remember up there. Put it out there for ninety days, you'll have. I guess my question is. Who do we? Want on the board and how many? Honestly, I don't think all five council members need to be on board because we're gonna make the final decision anyways. I'd rather see, like I say, a couple of people.
Well, there should be a review of a review of board today. Kind of pared down and, you know, we get like thirty five, thirty five uh. So resumes that we need to pare that down to some degree because, yeah, the final interview, I think, should be done by this board. But to prepare that down, kind of. Have, you know. Think that the mayor should be a part of all of it. And maybe one, another city, you know. It isn't a lot of your.
Yes, I'm just questioning, all right, the top question for you guys. What exactly are you looking for that isn't being met right now? Because we have an interim and there's cleaned up a whole bunch of mass city halls looking way better than it has in years. And in most positions in most cities and how we hired our last couple city administrators. The person who has come in has been from within. They didn't put it out if that person was capable of doing the job. I I guess I don't understand the urgency of trying to get somebody in here so fast. Well, we've never been trying to let the dust settle and give him a chance to prove himself that he can do the job.
And he will be in there and he can submit an application and be in there with everybody else, but. From what it's been pointed out is we've been lax in not vetting.
But that has nothing to do with what's being up to the outside.
Yeah, but we also, we need to go through the process. And we haven't been doing that. So we're going through the process now. It's pretty.
I was just knowing, I was just have to add to that the. Uh, if he has an outstanding resume, because he obviously has.
The last one had an outstanding resume and look the position we're in. A resume doesn't tell you anything. Actions speak louder than words.
But it's up to us to make that decision.
Unfortunately, you guys are not listening to the people again.
I think we've, no, I think we've up to this point, we've listened quite, quite, quite well, actually.
If he's to be open and if.
Yeah, we have.
As soon as it burns about that patient, then yes, he will be appointed.
I'm printing right now for everybody. I'll see on your website has a thirty one page handbook. That's a guide for recruiting city administrator. So I'll get you each a copy. Um. And that way maybe you'll help with like the hiring board suggestions.
Like, of course, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I understand what you're talking about a little bit, but. There is, there is a process we start to follow. I think that to where it would be comfortable with. Good. We like that and we see that. The employees like exactly we and that is going a long way and this is the position that he actually does want to do. That that's all of them consider and. The doubt is this process what we can talk about. They're not saying that he's not gonna get that job to where he look good. And we're gonna listen to what the employees have to say because that is a long way into what. How we feel about him and then I think there's this for because of what happened, because of all the issues that you brought up. We feel like there we have to maybe we were going a little bit further than maybe we needed to to go through this process. Because there was a lot of. Unaccountability, maybe that was.
Right, you guys, people had their head buried in the sand and now we paid the price.
Yeah, so but now we're not everything. So we're going to do our diligence and make sure that we get the right person in here, but. And that very well, it's gonna be that. It's not, so don't feel like it's, you know, we're putting this.
Sorry, we're. Well, I would like going forward to not have the sand so that.
And maybe unnecessary.
Employees can communicate with us and the city administrator can communicate with us. So there's not all of this. Behind the scenes going on.
Everything's so well, rather than us. We're down here in your business all the time. No, and everything's so well open right now. You can walk in city hall and it is a completely different feel. You can have other departments who come in and feel welcome. People can walk in and have conversation with him, other employees. Um. It's incredible.
We understand that. You're saying, why are we pushing so fast? We're not.
Right.
We're talking, he's been entering for almost a month now. We're talking application for ninety days, then it's gonna be another month before we make a decision after that. So we're talking close to five months. And that'll give them five months to decide if he wants to do this job, if he's capable of it and everything exists. We can not do it and then. You know, maybe.
Yeah.
Actually doesn't want to do it and then.
You know.
Twenty days behind.
Did I miss the last council meeting that there is somebody within the city that's looking at retiring this potential position that you might want instead of city administrator?
Oh, I mean, I was like, that's what I've been dreaming for, was to leave position with him, but that was before long left and everything else happened.
And if you had your choice. If you had your choice, would you?
I don't really know.
And.
Only for their month. And at my turn, he's gonna have to get it out. He's gonna have another four months to make that decision.
So I.
That'll be after we have to get someone started.
You mean, come on that you feel like because it didn't have the support of council?
Yeah.
You feel like you don't have the support?
No.
That's how, I I know I you and I have other employees who is being pushed so fast of like. Give it some time to let the dust settle.
It will be, it will be at least for five months.
Yeah, that I keep this calm that down because we're working and this is a process and we're trying to go through it so that doesn't happen again.
Also, we we feel as a group, I'm sure I. But no, I can speak for the rest of it, but. If they object to what I'm gonna say, um, they can say, but we felt. The animosity in the room when you guys all showed up, all the departments showed up and, you know, expressed your concerns. We felt that and we know we, I have felt the difference coming into the office a few times that I come in there. It's it's a happy place. It's a it's a feel good place and we want to maintain that as much as, you know, we possibly can. Um, so we're doing our best, I think, uh, under the circumstances.
And I guess I have another question more towards that is. If it doesn't pass that you don't have to live within city limits. You currently don't live within city limits, and I'm under the pressure of moving outside of city limits.
But if this says that if it does pass, they they just have to be thirty minutes.
But if it's for some reason that doesn't pass.
And and that's.
I can't imagine that it would win, right?
There's not anybody that's gonna put signs up and campaign against it that I'm aware of.
But, but yeah, I.
But it is a possibility.
That working in the back space because he has a job here no matter what. He does a great job and we all know he's doing a great job, but you're, I don't know if you're gonna get somebody that's gonna wanna come in and say it except a position in January, knowing that. If they don't want to live here, then if if they, if it doesn't pass, they don't go get their job.
But the same thing could happen is. If it doesn't pass, Zach doesn't qualify for the job anymore and then you're back to the drawing board of.
Why wouldn't he?
Reapply.
Well, if you have the residents, I think that.
I can't imagine it, but I'm looking at all scenarios.
Sure, yeah, there's a lot you have to consider. There's a lot of what is, yeah, I think.
And. It's a big thing to decide where you're gonna live and.
You know, very.
Especially when you're building your house.
That's the reason we want to. Make this change because our applicant pool is gonna be a lot lower if they have to. Live in city limits versus thirty minutes.
Want to mention, you know, this position, um. I have heard of people researching grants and dealing with grants. Me personally, and I'm an educated person. I wouldn't know where to start with researching grants and monies and stuff like that for the city and.
I can tell.
I don't, I don't know if Zach has that experience already or even if he wants.
Until our last city administrator, it was never the city administrator's responsibility for all the grants. We always had other employees doing that.
There are some qualifications that Zach still needs to meet.
Absolutely.
For the position. And that's what we want to give the opportunity to see if that's something that he wants to pursue as well. Uh, you know, he may not want to. He may get a look, take a look at it and say, hell, no, listen to what I want to do. So I I think we're going down the right path. And I, we do hear what you're saying, Chris. But as as the mayor said, yes, we we do have to do the due diligence that it may seem like we're dragging our feet or we're. Or we're trying to get to it too fast. We have to get the information out there in order to see if there's even the interest in the position. Uh, I know that southern position sat out there for. This was out there a long time and they finally find the code in.
Four nine minutes, the job description you mentioned, there was something that was stricken. Was it already out of the job description or something we need to take about?
Okay, it was, uh, the job description in the very last one, it's something friends, he said as far as. He prepared this, he means very full handle. Already says it except with the police.
Oh, so that's already.
Yeah, John, when he got the contract, then it's not the case.
Okay, good. So I will, I'll take that. I had a strike and no question mark from job description.
And I agree with you one hundred percent. That follow minutes, if we. Wait until this passes, his six months can be on.
I'm just saying, I'm like, I feel like it's a slap in the face. And this is just how I feel and I know other employees, not necessarily that, that we're gonna let you do your job. You probably can do this job. You're doing a great job. But we want to see if there's just something a little bit better and then we'll decide what to do with you. And we'll throw you the deciding one at all.
That's not, yeah. That's not true. And we're gonna think of, we're gonna think of. Three mountains. Two hundred people in the city.
Right.
We're doing the best for what we think is the city and following charter. And and that kind of stuff. And unfortunately, that's just.
Yeah, he had been in this position for a while. He had been in this position for a while now and. I'm doing one, doing a great job and then we were doing this process. I could see maybe it's building that way, but everything's so green right now. Everything just happens. So we're just gonna do our due diligence naturally. Because he's. Applying for the position is on with you or with somebody else, that's when I have a chance and that's. I mean, everybody likes that and we, it's gonna go a long way. So how we feel about him.
I guess as a. Community member. I would like to see a standard set, so leadership positions, whether they're promoted within or. No matter what, this position is open for three months to all application applicants. To where it's consistent. So any department management positions are all open to the public. Or not at all and they're promoted within first, just that there's some guidelines set out there. So. Maybe the employees don't feel that way.
I don't understand. I understand and I, yeah, I agree. Should be a good precedent. Yeah, there is a precedent that many director higher level position is. Put out for to the public prior to hiring in without.
Just so the employees don't feel. That. While you're in this interim position or you've been filling in for this, that there's some clear guideline that. We know you've been doing it and we're not saying that you won't get the position, but this is our policy that a position, this position is put out too.
It's very common and obvious because I'm dealt with that too. So I mean, I I like that.
The thing is, is we. As a city council, according to the real prefer, we appoint the city administrator.
And that's.
Send the city administrator appoints departments.
And and put that.
Right, right in charge.
Right, we're not, we're not choose the same state.
But like, is there not like department policies or policies within. Hiring the HR policy and assuming that there is some sort of precedent on how to fill those positions or that. Because like at the hospital. They. If you're gonna do a job change, it's open within within the department for two weeks and if nobody within the department applies for it, then it goes out to the public. Or if you want more applicants, then it goes out to the public, but you get so long for inner department people to apply because. Maybe there's somebody else that is a senior employee that wants to apply for it. That. You guys didn't know about or something like that, just to give more options without just putting it out to the public, not that.
That would mean that you would have to turn that responsibility. Over to each department headed by Anderson.
No, but what.
The city administrator takes care of.
Yeah, the city administrator. Really, the only hiring that we actually handle. As a city, as a city council, the only hiring that we ever replant before is the city administrator.
Right.
Administrator puts into place supposedly theoretically.
Of the policies.
As a policy puts into place the rest of those policies that that is part of the city administrator position.
As a policy, puts into place the rest of those policies that, that is part of the city administrator's position, uh, and that should be uniformed, but that's not something that we use.
Well, where would it be, is it in the charter?
It should be the policy man.
Policy manual, cause somewhere there'd be a writing, the city administrator does that procedure where he, uh, you know.
And we can, we can actually have it from a time, what's an employee, but I can, yeah, we can sort of, sort of administer, administer policies of each procedures. But yeah, for this case alone, I, I, I agree with Jamie on, I have to say, uh, that's a, oh, yeah, I think it'd be uniform, it all should be uniform, yeah.
We want what's best for the city, and if that's somebody that's already here, or if there's somebody that's really waiting on qualified out there. But it shouldn't be the same for all positions, and that's what we're doing for the city administrator right now.
So, with that said, I read all that agreement, putting it out there for at least ninety days.
Yeah, I think ninety days is a good timeframe, to see what we get.
Yes.
And is it something that you'll just post on the city website, or are you gonna list it through like in key?
You know, we go on League of Oregon Cities, um, because that's where a lot of the administrative positions are entered. Um, and then on our website, it'll be posted, um, I don't know if you want me to.
I don't think so, yeah.
We have an account with WorkSource, put it on WorkSource, and, um.
Does it cost to go?
WorkSource doesn't cost anything, indeed, I think there is, I have to look into signing up. Uh, we posted something on Indeed once before, and then I got a notice that it was in violation of whatever they, it was for a police officer position. And I couldn't, it wasn't likely to figure out, I'm like, it's just job analysis, so I'll have to look into.
So you can put it as many places as possible, because you never know, looking for, or really don't look.
So that's gonna leave, um, three, basically three months, um, after the applications come in for us to sort through and, and.
And in the meantime, we send work out and delay that forward to, you know, end of that time. It's gonna be a long process, I'm very confident in that, and it's gonna get them at least over five months to see if he wants to do this job and how things are going. We're not making a decision like, uh, hire somebody else, in the same way, I have to go through, I think we need to go through the process.
Yeah.
The last two times here, we have gone through the process.
Nobody's arguing right here.
And then as far as the charter, um, so that I can work, because I will want to send what we decide to the attorney to find to the explanatory statement. Do we want to go with thirty minutes from the city limits as an amendment to the charter, um, for the ballot?
I like the order.
You wanna move to the city limits or to the city you called up, she does.
I was trying to go from other places, this is ours, oh, and it was not too hard, it was relatively small.
Well, it's raised.
I kind, I kinda like this first date, I like, it, it doesn't put a parameter.
I put that on there because I was blown away that that was their charter.
It doesn't put a.
Optimum response.
The optimum.
Yes, that it may be required, like, if they, like, you were not, they'll change the requirement.
Or what's optimum.
Yeah, well, that's what I had mentioned in the last council meeting, adding, uh, like a waiver, a council waivers that we even have control over. Um, like, we could put a stipulation in there, like thirty, you know.
But I, I like the, I like the openness of that, where it says, but may be required to reside within a distance of the city limits. Which would provide opportunity of optimum response time in case of a city emergency, that puts no timeframe on it, I like that.
Yeah, it does leave a lot of room for interpretation, so, as soon as you get here, it's fine.
Yeah, well, especially, you know, you know, let's just, I mean, in all reality, as far as. If you put emergency in the city, the city administrator is gonna be, but.
Yeah, the public works, you know. Maybe add something to that sentence, say, you know, to add councils, and cancel distractions, aggressive type thing, so that way we leave it more open. Leave it open, but we can review like, but, you know, but there.
And kind of amend, so to speak.
I guess if you're gonna leave it vague, you probably need some criteria of what they qualify as an exception to the rule, because just cause I. Maybe I'm friends with somebody, so I did an exception, but I, I rubbed this person the wrong way, so they're gonna deny my exception?
That's right.
Yeah.
That, that's extremely vague.
I think it's, because basically you're saying.
Yeah, it's.
Indeed, that, that's true, you know, they could do a permanent job, like.
And I, I understand that times have changed since the city was originally done in ninety-three, where now you have Zoom. And you can visually see, and you can have more direct contact with someone, so the response time might not need to be quite as immediate, but. Leaving it that open leaves it to interpretation of who likes who and who doesn't.
Yeah, I'm, but, that's what I like, I, I like the idea of having some paperwork, more finite, finite, but then with, with the. With the waiver, we can do a waiver, like if somebody wished for like.
Like unfortunate to me, not Thursday.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, something like that, they were, they were able to find this out, cause I was, I was trying to be nice, cause I really don't, I, I really don't want. I, I like the, the idea of being residing in the city, I always have that too.
I do like the idea of residing within the city, but I also feel like.
But I understand the other.
Four, five, seven zip code is more.
And that, that's where I think for sometimes.
But thirty minutes also, I think is fair, because maybe you wanna live in Roseburg, but as long as you're, or you currently live in Roseburg, but. If you're vested in seeing our community grow and improve.
Women in Roseburg, I, I have a problem with that.
But maybe you have family property on Melrose, and that's where you've always lived, and you wanna live on her family property, I mean.
And, and people have kids, and they don't want to take their kids out of school if they, if they're within this thirty minute thing. And, and basically, look at our Southside School, we ran it out of the lowes anywhere in the state, so it's gonna be hard to get somebody coming in here and say, you have to live here.
Would you like me to ask the attorney if we were to say thirty minutes of city limits? I don't know, Jamie asked if you want city limits or city hall, um. City limits was just what I pulled from another one, but would you like me to also add, ask the attorney how to add. The opportunity to appeal that decision or that, um, requirement to the council?
Give the council an, an hour.
That way the person could appeal to council a waiver for that, would you like that in the charter?
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was mentioning, like, a way that the council had to actually.
Right, if they are. That does, yeah, cause.
If we make it more, if, if we, if we were to put that distress, that.
Now, that's, that's the ninety-seven, four, five, seven, but that's not the same.
All the, all the same, the still relatives, off the gold way with the empty office, that's, that's why I was saying, maybe we could use the, uh, with, with, uh. With, uh, Luke's idea of having a council saying that's a minute, but with that, yeah, those are nine, seven, four, five, seven zip codes, but then. Uh, have the council be able to, uh, give a waiver, and it would, somebody found a house, possibly even visit the county. Yeah.
Yeah, Council Road can be Merle Creek, but if you live by Parker King, it's standing well.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so it could be left up to the council's discretion at some point.
Yeah, I, uh, legal, uh, interpretation of that. Thirty minutes covers all that, thirty minutes covers Sutherland, thirty minutes covers Roseburg.
Yeah, thirty minutes.
Almost alive, I mean, it's central, that's down here.
I mean, I think that once I live down south, north, I hope that it's well within that thirty minutes, but.
But then I, I go back to, you know, we have somebody living in Sutherland, what vested interest are they gonna have to see Merle Creek grow? I mean, they're, they're, they're. If their job, they're coming here to the job to do, take care of the city, but they're not going to be a part of the community.
Yeah, I go back, or they, they just, they just, like, zip code kinda keeps them living, or some of that, or some of that, with a waiver, yeah, I go, yeah, I can see what's happening.
I can see someone in Roseburg, and I can see this part of Sutherland.
No, I'm just pulling that out, is that where that thirty minute radius is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know, so maybe like Luke's saying, do the same thing with the zip code within, with a, with a waiver.
Yeah, I think the zip code with a waiver, yeah, do we, um, decisions that are made, or do they have to have motions?
So I was questioning that too, you can make a motion in a special session, but, um. I think council consensus on this, because we're also still sending it to the attorney for.
Right, so it's not really.
A language, so maybe when we get the formal language during a council meeting, we can make a motion on that language for the ballot. Because we.
We have a hearing right now, right?
And we do have to do a resolution at a point to place it on the ballot, so maybe we can do a consensus on what you want to see in the language. And then I'll work on getting that language.
And is it possible that when you talk to the leading council, maybe run that by how our charter right now, because if he says for a six month continuum period?
I couldn't know if they're the break, can they read and accept it, I, I have that as the first thing you guys ask.
Thank you, Jordan.
I have a little, I'm sure, but I can get it. Um, I was looking at, I, if we want to stick to the city administrator, I had. One of the things that I was kind of wondering about, what's, the city administrators has, once, once they're hired. They have a lot of power pretty quickly to make decisions within, but, because now, I had an idea of, um. Letting that for like the first three to six months, that they can't come in and just.
Yeah, they'll just play it out, they really don't, there's only what, three or four, but yeah, I mean, they could.
I mean, like, last night, I went to somebody, somebody in market, and like, fired Brewster, because it is good friend, it could be the chief or something like.
Right, I don't, I don't want to.
Yeah, like, I would wanna protect our stuff a little bit, that, um, those are the things, not saying that Zach would do that too, but, but, you know, I'm just saying, like. You're saying protect, protect.
In what kind of process is there, for like the ninety day, um, probationary period, that when the probationary period, council still controls how we're being assigned, I don't know.
I don't know, there is.
Yeah, that could be part of the hybrid.
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
That would make the city charter be something we can, we can deal with.
In the employment agreement.
Right.
Good idea.
So the only recommended site, I don't know where we're at on the agenda thing, was the only recommended change to the charter? The requirements for the city administrator?
We were, no, it's, it's, if there's any more, I don't have any, or.
Well, we're gonna check and see if it's.
See if they each had to be a separate measure, which I would, I would think would be, because you wouldn't want to give people the opportunity to pick what they wanna change versus then all or nothing.
The only other thing that I, I've been on a couple of, I kinda wavered both ways on it, is giving the mayor a vote, that's the only thing I.
You wanna change that.
That's the only other thing that I, and, but, you know, I kinda, I would kinda wop on that too, because in, in the event of a tie. We'd have six on the council, that one with the vote, and then, yeah.
Right, so.
I think, I think the head of the mayor go work if he have either four counselors, six counselors to make him the odd number. I just don't know if it works out good if you're making him an, even a number.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I mean, however, like, at this point right now, you couldn't end up in a tie, you have an open position.
Right.
So him having.
And then he's the tie.
He is the tiebreaker now, so.
Yeah, that's temporary, that's a vacant position, just like our forms, not four tonight, our form is only three, the other, we have a vacant position. And that's gonna stay that way until we, we put somebody in that seat and change it or.
I had a, a couple of just small things, where you have. Section one, section one, out of chapter, why does it have to say nineteen ninety-three? That when you wrote, I know, but why do we have to keep that, there's like little things like that, like the dates for, to tell you the amendment, that's just, only that, but that's already, I mean, I'll just.
I mean, how this could be charter required to make the name?
I guess not, I mean, it's not. I'm just like, like updating, like, for example, the dates on chapter in a section eight, like.
How many, that just might be historical, how many.
Somebody has to be like, okay, nineteen ninety-four, then kind of back into like, figure out, then you know, instead, I was maybe updating dates, so. Maybe, maybe we can't do that, so just, yeah.
Yeah, let's just establish for the. So like ninety-nine, or every fourth year thereafter.
You hear from the other years to start changing it up, you know, this is.
And so I wanna clarify, the language I'm gonna send the attorney is the question on the consecutive break. And if there's a break, if we can restart, and then we're doing nine, seven, four, five, seven zip code. With council having the option to issue a waiver on that.
Yes. Zach, you got any info on any of this? You guys have covered it pretty well, you don't think not doing that waiver thing, I mean, you got, you do have somebody that. They don't know what the waiver's gonna be, so, you know, if they're discovering that they're.
Look there.
Bouting their family that they're gonna apply for this job or not, they need to pretty much know if, if they apply or not, I mean, if they qualify or not. I think we're leaving that, we're leaving that vague, it's nice, you know, we can leave it open where you change it, but we need to let the applicant know.
Right, but they could apply for it and then clarify it if they got into the finals or whatever at that point. But if they're not interested enough to even take a chance, then they don't really want the job either, they wouldn't apply.
So, and we'd read, like, the city administrator is required to live within the nine, seven, four, five, seven zip code. For the Merle Creek zip code, within six months of employment, an option to appeal may apply in cases where an employee can demonstrate their ability to perform, perform their ability. To meet their expectation.
There's AI, too.
I mean, I did produce AI on that, but, I mean.
It's, that's more often, be the vague.
That's, that's, but yes.
I think somewhere, when you're putting it out there, it needs to be clear that there is an option to appeal, if you're going to provide an option to appeal. But what requires, what qualifications are there for that option to appeal? But you have to clearly provide the, the ability to show that you can do the job without living in the nine, seven, four, five, seven, the code. But that.
Well, if you, yeah, you can get, go down, uh.
There's a huge rabbit hole of leaving it open, ended with an appeal.
But then how do you restrict, define that, you know, restrict that appropriately? Yeah, see, that's like.
I don't know.
Back to your thirty minutes, so it's a lot of.
Still, I have to take, take a little break and go thirty minute radius, I mean, we're going from, we're going from this far. To that far, and if they can't qualify to that far, maybe, maybe they need to be applying somewhere else.
And I think it needs to be thirty minutes or within the zip code, I don't know that an option to appeal.
Well, thirty minutes to a, is definitely considered.
Yeah, and the whole point of this is just so that we can cast our net out farther to maybe get more applications, and we don't know what we're gonna get right now as it is. So we're beating stuff up, it's all on that.
You know, and also, like, where are the chances that we'll need to be worrying about?
Here.
So you have a story, and you're out, so you know, what might happen out there from this area, and if, if that had been in there in thirty minutes, for example.
But if you put it in the charter now, in the event it's not Zach, or Zach leaves, and you're in this position to hire a city administrator again, then you're not really. Then you're not relooking at the charter.
Right, that's why we need it in regardless of who, what happens, but.
Can I ask how many applicants you got last time?
Zero.
We just.
The last two times, I don't, I don't believe that, I don't believe they even.
But actually, if I remember correctly. Shaun, they, they sent it out to the, they, I, out to, they put it out there. And they had received some, but then it was suggested by the interim at that time. Uh, to go ahead and bring Shaun forward. And that's what the council decided at that time, but they had always listed some, uh, some applications. But they didn't do any interviews or know there was no interview done. And when Lonnie took the position, uh, I don't remember it. It sort of just hit from within. I don't remember the council making any, putting anything out there.
I don't think that.
No. They went to twenty minutes, we came out, gave it a go. The, uh, the last time there was an application pool was in, uh, two thousand and four. When Aaron Cubic was hired from that pool. We received, I was a part of that hiring process. We probably received twenty-five applications. We narrowed it down to, the first time we narrowed it down to seven and interviewed five. And that five, Aaron Cubic was chosen and even the position took two thousand and eleven. He took the transpass position.
So was that within Myrtle Creek? And that would send the city?
He lived there. Yeah, he built a house, he built the house, uh, he bought the property from Sharp down there at the end of Spruce and built a house there.
Well, that's a good sign then, because that shows that there will be interest in. But it's word. Well, I don't think that some of the city administrators in some of the other councils that have horrible problems like with their water and stuff, they would want them coming to my bird. Not that bad.
The applicant pool, I believe, is not gonna, you're not gonna have people that are residing. Other than Zach for that matter, that are, that should interim, but are residing within the area now. That are, that are going to be applying for the position, really. Uh, you, I doubt you, I doubt you give more, maybe one or two. Uh, and that's actually Zach, of course, but.
You're saying that live in the city limits now?
No, they, no, live within the area that, that we're, we're talking about anyway. Most of it's gonna come from outside. So do we finalize, I don't know if we still have to finalize that. Is it thirty minutes? Is it zip code? Are we doing a waiver?
I don't feel like there's been a decision made.
I thought we made a decision and it kinda went sideways.
So then kind of, we're, then thirty minutes with a possible waiver and just leave that waiver open? Uh, to the council.
I thought we decided that we were gonna have a waiver.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to do a waiver, right? Maybe, I mean. Having it in there, we don't have to do any kind of waiting.
But, but again, but then it gets back about Jamie's asking. What are the parameters for a waiver? I mean. I think it's.
I guess. About the parameters later.
Are you worried about discrimination within that?
Case by case basis, somewhat.
There's probably a case by case.
And.
But somebody, somebody came in and found.
Yes, there's interpret, there's possible discrimination like that. I mean, I'm not saying that, that's, that's not our intent, but.
I'm just playing that with advocate out here.
I understand.
I guess you are.
Somebody can, that's maybe on a great flight that you go across the street, like somebody said earlier, across the street from, from, uh. It was thirty-one minutes.
I would rather see the thirty minute timeframe than the zip code, to be honest, if you really wanna open your. Pool.
You don't have a call when they leave their house and we're all gonna sit here and just.
Well, we can map out, we can kinda have a general idea of what that is and say.
So.
Like you're gonna be able to make.
So Google Maps, um.
Yeah.
I did after I was going when I questioned time, um, I was paying more attention at home on Google Maps and Jonathan had brought up. That, right, you put their address? I don't know how, and I think if you just put, well, if you put Myrtle Creek, it's not gonna know city limit.
It gives, like, it, it makes me, like, down to, uh, the departments that are across from Petty Pitcher, kinda like what they think is.
So that you put in their address and city of Myrtle Creek? And then there's the options of like a bus and walking and biking and car and it, it breaks it down by minute. It literally says it should take you to thirty minutes, so.
We know if you were.
Well, there's, there's one, you can go, there's a website, I think that. Um, you can put the city hall and you say, okay, what's the remaining radius at this point? And it will give you that idea. So you got that map and you can kinda judge that on. You can be navigating.
I mean, I guess if I was gonna.
Anybody, anybody who's applying for this.
Regarding the attorney, that it's like an option for appeal and everything, that it's an option to appeal, but then the council could deny it. If you wanna leave it vague.
If he's saying appeal, will you need a waiver?
Exception.
Well, I feel like appeal is just something that's used more throughout our code. If there's a planning decision you don't like, you're allowed to appeal it. If you're denied a business license or a liquor license, you're given the option to appeal it. Um, and that's just would be an appeal to the council.
Appeal was denied.
Right.
This is not.
And then you have to appeal it.
I mean, we're feeling the requirement, it's live within thirty minutes, cause I live thirty-five minutes. I, I mean.
I really don't see that, that would be an issue with, I can see that maybe be an issue with some of those. We've already hired five years down the road, they decide. My kids are growing up and I wanna, I'm buying a ranch out on Buckhorn Road. And they're already employed here. And then that would be the waiver, yes, we're gonna.
We were. With an option for.
And even all these web, website, Google things, thirty minutes. Who decides thirty minutes? We had the.
Obviously, they give you that.
And the smoke. Slowed. At midnight, somebody calls you right now, you can probably get here.
You wanna, that's a time that's sunny outside and we're going to drive.
My car changes, you know, cause it can tell there's a slowdown and stuff, turns yellow and then it turns red and.
Uh, I don't want to.
We, they're just pretty good at.
Maybe get a general idea of what.
Yeah, right.
When, when somebody blocks. Are we, so thirty minutes? I mean, who could, we do that thirty minutes?
Yes.
I bet.
Yeah, I think we're beating them. Yes, we are.
Thirty minutes for the, whatever, yeah. You have to do that. It's probably already happened.
Somebody's believed in that, pretty thankful, but.
Um, any other, anything else in the charter that you guys wanted to?
Well, so it would be, when you're hired, you have six months to live within that thirty minutes or five. Or we would just be, um, getting reserve tenure, would we change?
Why couldn't we just eliminate any of that? I mean. Right under that city administration, the point at the top there, where there's fifteen different things that are listed out to the administrator. Put in one clause, the council reserves the right to waive any of these.
Prescriptions or guidelines or?
That way it wouldn't have to be so individual specific to each. Our voter, like someone is in general, is that?
Nobody.
Do you know how many voters?
A few men are.
Vote on anything anyways? Yeah, you should know. About that many. Anything else? Well, just for the record, I'm not in favor of the thirty minutes, but I just wanna vote. What is, what would you like to see everyone consider? I, I'd like to, myself personally, I want to see every name wait. So that's.
That they have to live in city limits. That's cause you live.
No, I just think that the.
That's something that they should do. They should be vested in the city that they are overseen.
Yep.
I understand.
I think you could be vested in the city and not live within the city, live it.
Right, but if their wages attached, then they're.
Probably preserve the right to disagree, right?
Right? But like that, he lives out, south, south hurdle, right? He lives out south hurdle, he's clearly not good in the community, but he's not within city limit.
We only have probably what, three or maybe four employees that do live in city limits? No department heads.
So I feel like the city limit requirement is extreme. I feel like nine seven four five seven is your.
I would be alright.
So we're only thirty minutes, right?
You gotta consent or go for.
That is.
And Bob's not in favor, but he's, uh, just one.
I just wanted to know that.
Okay. We, we know it is.
All right. Are we good for this meeting?
So would you like me, um. I could probably get everything together and put it out tomorrow unless you don't mind waiting until Tuesday, September second when we come back. And the other side I was trying to think of was governmentjobs.com. That's where a lot of cities posting, ZUCC posting, sounds like a good place.
Well, it's gonna take, if you're gonna ask these questions of the.
So.
Council, legal council.
Now, legal council, that is for the. And the language or charter amendment and language. Did you still want the job posted out? Um, to get that going for ninety days? That would be September, October, November.
Yeah, I, I think there's a very important, you can pick the last holiday.
So we'll do, um, ninety days, I'll get it posted on all of those. And tomorrow for sure, I'll send a note to legal council regarding the consecutive. Six months if there's a pause and language for a ballot measure for thirty minutes. Um, from the city with the availability of a waiver from council.
How about, since we have a city council meeting Tuesday? You get all this rolled up, the script and everything, and then we review it on Tuesday to make sure that we all agree that's what, that's what we've discussed and then.
We'll have to do that then. Question, okay.
Really.
Monday's a holiday.
I have, I will have tomorrow and I will have Tuesday to do it. It's, this is mostly gathering. I will have, for the job posting, I will have to do a lot.
All right, anything else? Good? All right, we ended during six thirty-one.